Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We have another exciting start to our meeting tonight. We get to promote one of our long-serving officers officially to the title of detective. We'll do the official paperwork part first, and then we'll do the ceremony on swearing-in. Resolve to appoint Jean-Marc Gruiller to the position of detective at an annual salary of $129,486 effective June 17, 2019. I'll make a motion if I can, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's where it's going to end. All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Jean-Marc Gruiller.
I, Jean-Marc Gruiller.
Of the village of Irvington.
Of the village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of detective.
The duty of the office of detective.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We say good work. We appreciate it. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a little drink.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think it was.
First, you have to just sit down.
Come on.
Yes.
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 Now, we'll keep the excitement going with a presentation on litter awareness.
Anne, did you want to maybe give a little overview of what we're going to see, or?
Actually, Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to just say that we are delighted to see our high school students and our middle school students getting very interested in the environment of Irvington and protecting our village and keeping it. When Rebecca and Louis came to us and said that they wanted to do a litter campaign, a litter public awareness campaign, and collect data on what they're finding in the village, we couldn't have been happier because this is going to help us all to focus and focus attention on this important topic. So with that, I'll just introduce Rebecca Cummings to do her presentation.
Great.
Are you sitting there?
You just need to stand there wherever you're most comfortable.
Can you give me the mic if you take it out if you like? I'll just lower it a little, it's okay. Okay, so basically, I don't know where Louis is right now, I think he will be here within five minutes, but he has some litter. He's probably picking up litter. So throughout this project, basically what we've been doing is we've been going around Irvington's public areas and cleaning up litter and recording what we found. As someone that's very aware of the litter, I found, so I'll just start it. So our objective was to help preserve the environmental well-being of our town by gathering litter and trash bags in places such as the reservoir, Halsey Pond, Matheson, and Scenic on Hudson. We also wanted to alert the public of the issue, and yeah. Okay, so we started an Instagram account called Underdirtirv because Irvington is often called Dirtier. So we did that. And...
Clever, I like it.
Thank you. And basically what we did is we posted the pictures that Louis had taken and came up with clever little captions and just sort of got our peers involved and got them interested in what was going on. And I had like people come up to us at prom and were like, "Hey, I like what you guys are doing, it's really interesting, I wish you guys would post more." So we got Lucas Chu involved as well because he expressed interest in it, so. All right, so at Split Rock, also sometimes known as Bedrock, it's a popular party area for the high school, not that I would know. But they have, we found a lot of can tabs and glass pieces, and surprisingly, no bottles, which is something we would usually find, but as of recent weeks, since the carry-on, carry-out method has become implemented, we haven't seen as many cans or bottles, which is interesting. We didn't find any bags of dog poop, but we did find bottle caps and jewel pods and other paraphernalia stuff. By the reservoir, we found can tabs, glass pieces, bottles, wrappers, dog poop, which was a lot, we found about 20 pieces, 20 bags of them by the water. Styrofoam, cardboard straws, cups, fishing wire, just basically everything. By Halsey Pond, we found basically everything except for the dog poop. And something that was interesting that we found was construction materials. So there's been a lot of construction going on there, and we realized that there's a lot of things just kind of like left there that must have, when it rains, just kind of floated around, I don't know. But it's a danger to the wildlife, and yeah. Scenic, we found a lot of stuff near the water, on the rocks and stuff. We tried our best to get as much as we could, but a lot of it was plastic bags that were like stuck under the rocks that we couldn't really lift. Found a lot of big like cartons, big pieces of styrofoam, stuff that's probably from boats. And then the beaches, this is the thing that I found the most interesting throughout the entire internship, was at the beaches at Matheson Park, every day when we would go there, there would be new stuff, and it would all be broken up pieces, stuff that didn't originate from Irvington, but stuff that is washing up in Irvington. So what we did is we collected a lot of the stuff from the Irvington Boat Club area, and then we brought it to them, and we were like, "Hey, this is something we found at your beach, we think it's your responsibility to clean it up," yada, yada, that. So we found a lot of stuff there, that was our main concern, I think, because if it just stays there, it's going to go right back in, and it'll just eventually make its way to the oceans, and then further the damage and all that. Further steps we want to have be taken. We think that there should be recycling cans adjacent to every trash bin in the village and in the parks. Something that Lucas Chu had suggested was stop the use of disposable plastic straws and cutlery at local businesses, put signs up throughout the trails regarding the consequences of littering and leaving dog poop. And we think that we should stop using plastic cups at village and school events such as future graduations, board meetings, sporting events, and track trash data to see effectiveness of the carry-on, carry-out method, and see if that should be furthered and continued. So that's basically it. And that was just a note from Louis. It says, "If this internship did teach me one thing, it is that we need to take care of our environment, both locally and globally. I know I might sound like a broken record, but please attempt to make a positive change for our ecosystems. Climate change is real and is becoming a very pressing issue internationally. We need to protect our planet. The plastic problem is overtaking our waterways, making it nearly impossible for marine life to maintain a healthy and natural diet." And that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Great.
Actually, are there questions? Are there questions?
Well, actually, I have one thing, I mean, I think that awareness is probably the biggest thing we can do. And I think an interesting, I actually always, I kind of dislike the draconian laws that people pass in towns. Like, I wouldn't want to ban plastic straws, but I would like to, I actually never use plastic straws, but I would like to take our bully pulpit and make people not want to use plastic straws, so then the, you know, I think plastic straws are a very easy one to replace. You know, I think, first of all, you don't need them, you know, I know some people think they do, but I think it's kind of like a retraining thing where, you know, I think straws are a great one to start with because it's easier. I think, it's funny, I always look at how my habits have changed, and the one thing I haven't been able to break yet is coffee cups, the go coffee cups. I try not to use a lid, but then sometimes I'll go, "Well, I need a lid." I never use the hand safety things, but it's like, change, that I think straws is a great one to focus on, and I think that the work you guys are doing is one of the most, I think it's actually more effective than, so I remember when Hastings banned plastic bands, all of a sudden like the, I think it was like the grocery store, People of America, whatever they were, came and sued them and basically stopped it. So it's like, you know, what a waste, and people, you know, they were criticized for trying to do it, and some people loved it, and it became a big political battle as well. But I think that if we can, you know, almost sign a pledge that, "I'm not going to use plastic straws, I'm going to start taking my coffee container." And I'm always embarrassed to say, "Well, it's just a large or small," but I feel this, so I think that's like my own thing to get over. But I think the more we talk about it, and the more kind of presentations, and I think, you know, you go to talk to the Boat Club is a great one, because like, it's really hard when you have, you know, earnest, you know, young people that are working really hard on something, and you come up and say, "Hey, you guys are going to clean up your beach," because it just goes, it's really hard to say, "We're not doing that." You know, like, it's, and I think it's one of those things we have to constantly remind people until it becomes a habit. You know, so I think, you know, I feel the same way about water bottles, even though I have one here. You know, it's something that, you know, we're slowly, I think all of our habits are slowly changing, and I think your generation is starting to have us to change, so maybe we'll actually be able to work on the real problems. But I applaud this, I hope you guys continue to do, to work on this, and we'd be happy to help publicize your findings and maybe things like next steps you'd want to see. So we'd be happy to work with you on your project as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Any other questions? No?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We'll hear you later, but come back another night, remind us again. Next is announcements, checks over 28. Village purchasing policy, please be advised that Mayor Smith will present a check over $25,000. Vendor specific transport of destruction is for the police department shower and changing room. Came out of capital budget, it was $36,358. The next one is for Tongbushi Construction, purpose was various, is out of the capital, the water, and the general budgets, and for a total of $45,809.38. Then the vendor Stratagem, which is village security project, out of the capital budget, Announcements, I had one. Tomorrow is the slavery in Irvington presentation at the library at 7:00 P.M. I think it's fascinating, it goes back from, you know, our first kind of white settlers to all the way up to the 1850s. And kind of looks at the people that lived here that were not here under their own accord. And obviously, Irvington wasn't around then, but this land was still here, and I think it's fascinating. I think the thing I didn't know a year or so ago was that there's unmarked graves in our village, over, you know, down by where the DBW garage is across that way, which is fascinating to me, that, you know, this happened here. So there's what I expect to be an unbelievable presentation tomorrow night, 7:00 P.M. at the library, so that's the one announcement. If you have another announcement?
Yeah, it's the Abbott House build a playground.
Here, sorry.
There it is. Many of you may have gotten this message or seen it somewhere, but since Abbott House is, you know, a very important part of our community, I thought more people might want to know that you can register to help them build a playground. They're very, and especially kids up at Abbott House, and I think our community has been very welcoming of them, and they very much appreciate it. But there's a chance to help build this playground, donate to it, or spread the word about it. And the day of the build, in small print, is, well, let's see, can you see that?
The day of the build is Friday.
It's a date, it's like a Saturday. Oh, yes, okay, Friday, June 28. That's the actual day. And there are a lot of ways to get in touch with Abbott House, but 591-7300 is their number. So if you want to help be part of this community effort to help Abbott House, perhaps you will do so. That's my announcement.
Nope, we're good. Carson? So I'll move right along to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions on this?
Public comment?
Oh, sorry, public comment first.
Not connected to the...
Yeah, not connected to the public area.
Not connected to the zoning.
The agenda.
Okay. For the capital budget.
Yeah, sorry, I had to come after.
I'd like to make a public comment.
Sure.
In Jackie Hill's 22 South Paris, and I want to just say first off that I feel like you do, Mayor, that consciousness is the most powerful force in humanity, far more powerful than laws or regulations. So the trick is, how do you create consciousness together? So working with the board, the Green Policy Task Force, and the students that are working with us, and the farmers market, and the O'Hara Nature Center, the garden club, all of us can really change the consciousness of our village so that when these, they can't find so much, or they have people out there already picking it up with them. I think on the straws, we could do a consciousness campaign and probably end that one pretty easily, I think you're right, Mayor, on that. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank the students for their recommendations. I do think the village needs to, or the GPTF does believe, the village needs to provide recycling cans with trash cans, where people won't have the opportunity to put that beverage bottle, which is very valuable, by the way. It's plastics 1 and 2 and metal are very valuable to the county. The other thing I wanted to say tonight, so the Green Policy Task Force will help the village with any implementation of things like that, to educate the public and make sure it goes well. We're willing to express appreciation to Larry Shupfer for his great efforts to get charging stations put in the village for electric vehicles, he's doing it. And there are, since I became an electric vehicle owner myself, not only do I have my own vested interest, but I've become aware of how many families either have them or are talking about getting them or want to get an electric vehicle. So I think, we thank Larry for his efforts on that, and we want to thank Joe Ortino for his outstanding efforts. He's, tomorrow, the baseball picnic will be all compostable, everything compostable, everybody's just going to come and compost all of their plates, cups, everything. And that's a step forward that is really magnificent and brave, because you never know how these things are going to go at first, right? So we thank him for that, and we thank the village for your support.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other public?
Hi, Chad Kerr. I just wanted to let the board know that as part of a program that Parks Department's putting on at O'Hare, which Joe can perhaps tell about it, it's a four-day thing, but on Sunday, June 30th, we're having a two-hour part of our Living Classroom Series for our Pollinator Pathway, where CJ Riley and Peter Strom are going to be walking folks around the gardens, talking about what they've done up there, and kind of showing them their vision about what's going to happen with the O'Hara Nature Center. And I think it's going to be a great event, and I just wanted to tell the board, invite the board to come. I think it'll be a great day of the O'Hara Nature Center.
There's a pollinator hotel there now, right?
Yeah, so the Girl Scouts built a pollinator hotel, which is worth seeing, it's really interesting, and so that will add to all this as well, so there's a lot of great things going on up there.
Great, thank you so much.
Is it a hotel?
It's more than a rose. It's very expensive. We're going to have to change the zoning.
Nikki Cladings on through Javon Park. Would the slavery presentation be taped?
Not to my knowledge, friends of the Irvington Library, yeah, I don't think we thought of that. It's certainly possible to hold up a cellphone and have somebody just video it. That's what happened at another event, but if that's desired by friends of the library, maybe it can be...
I think it would be a wonderful resource, and then it could be shown on our cable channel, if that's possible.
Do you want to think about that, Joe? Yeah, yeah, I know. Library liaison, okay.
And second, I want to agree with Anne giving thanks about the electric vehicle charging stations. We know people who have contemplated buying electric vehicles and not been able to buy them because of a lot near their residence. So I think, you know, that's a great effort. Thirdly, I know that the board has been talking for some time about the recycling containers on Main Street, I was wondering if you could give a status update?
I think part of it was we were doing the tests in the park and finding out how contaminated they were, so I think that's our only concern is contamination, because we've, you know, read a bunch of studies about contamination, and that it's almost the worst, because if people, if maybe, you know, I'll carry this home and make sure I recycle it, but if I throw it in the recycling bin, it's contaminated, and it just all gets thrown in with the regular garbage. So I think that that's been our biggest concern, so I think we kind of said, "Let's try it first at the O'Hara Nature Center," and then we said, "Let's try it at the regular parks," and kind of see how that went. So I think that we're still kind of in the data-finding phase of that right now.
So I'm just, right now, I'm talking about just Main Street?
I know, I'm talking...
Which is different behavior.
True, but I think we wanted to see, well, container-wise, I mean, we, I think we took about, you know, a couple of years to get container recommendations, to find the ones that would, you know, reduce the most, reduce contamination the most. So I think that that's part of, it's really, yes, it's different, just, you know, different uses, because, you know, people don't typically have picnics on Main Street, but, you know, if we found a container that wasn't being, that had very little contamination versus another container, you know, because they're a lot more expensive than I thought, you know, it'd probably be almost $100,000 to put them all up and down Main Street. So, you know, I think we want to make sure that we don't spend that money on something that's going to actually make the situation worse, so. I think that's, and if anyone else has disagreement, that's been kind of the holdup, is making sure that we get the right containers, and we did work with the GPTF to try some, and, you know, I think, you know, the DPW and the RAC have been providing us, you know, anecdotal evidence anyway so far, so.
Are you contemplating the same containers on Main Street as you are using in the parks?
Potentially, the same, with the same designs, you know, that type of thing.
All right, well, I encourage the board to, you know, if possible, move forward on that. Our neighboring villages all have them.
We've talked to them about their contamination, and they actually said often they have to, unfortunately, just take the whole bag and put it right in the garbage because it's contaminated. So again, we want, since we're slower to the game, or last of the game, we want to get it right, rather than have to be the one that tried five different containers that really went, has went backwards, so.
So Brian, are we expecting a report at any point from, I guess, would be from DPW or from the Parks Department?
Kind of close, because I think the DPW kind of is looking at it more from a time, you know, how much extra time it takes to almost pick up two different things, where, you know, I think Joe loves to take on projects that he didn't know he had to cover, so he'd know, as well as working with the other, with the VOC, the Village Officials Committee, to kind of get their best practices about things that they tried and didn't work, or things that they tried and did work, so. We are, our next meeting of VOC, I'm going to ask for everyone's favorite containers that they have in different various locations, as you say, they're different, you can have different things for different areas. We actually try to find out from MTA also, if they, you know, what their success rate is, and they, dealing with the MTA is, you know, might as well ask the microphone what he thinks, but, so, we'd love to get their data too. Obviously, you have a large-scale project with, you know, fairly standard, you know, receptacles.
So can we make an action item to get a date for a report, rather than have it open-ended?
Sure.
Because I feel like, you know, this stuff is, as you know, it's dragged on for a number of years through various iterations, so it'd be nice to pull together.
Sure.
Try to see where that gets us, especially, I'm not sure, this is more of a question for Larry, but we are not budgeting them in the capital budget, so it would come out of operating funds are taken.
Right.
If we did something.
It would depend on the size of the project and how it would get funded.
And the timeframe.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you for that, and if I could just make one final comment on that. In addition to the actual compliance with how people use the recycling containers on Main Street, I believe it's also a matter of public education and perception. We have a lot of young families moving up for Brooklyn, and they say, "We want the recycling containers." And they have a level of expectation that they developed in New York City that, you know, I think we owe it to all of our residents, and especially our youth, to... as we can.
Sure, yeah, I think what we wanted to avoid was almost the window shopping and putting in receptacles that we knew wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be used. I think that's what we were most concerned with, especially because it's not like spending $20 and then saying, "That didn't work." So it's kind of a big project that we wanted to make sure we got it right, when we heard so much anecdotal evidence and it didn't go well.
Hi, Judy Filler, 97 Highland Lane. Not to belabor this, but just a quick thought about it too, we did this at the Bronx Zoo and had huge issues, and ultimately came up with solutions, and a lot of it had to do with information that's imported, and also some kind of supervision and some kind of process. So it was everything from the actual pictures on the containers of what's allowed, and what's not allowed, and what's X. It was information, you know, that we gave through our website, that we gave when people entered the parks, and so on, so I think, I can't speak for the Green Policy Task Force or the students, but I think that if we committed to this and actually started an education process, that we continued to figure out how best to do that, whether it's literally people, as we did at the Main Street School, as your wife was a part of that, at the elementary school at Towns Lane, who actually are there and volunteering to say, "Let's do it the right way, let's not contaminate," and a whole campaign about, "Let's not contaminate," because in essence, you've made it all not work.
Yep.
But if we could commit to that in the same way, once we figure out the right container, where they can't get other stuff in other than through those holes and so on, maybe there's a way to do this, because it has been so, a lot of the new locations that have, as well as the towns, and so, you know, if we can just be a leadership guy, that would be great, so, however we could help, that'd be huge.
Sounds good.
So, just a thought.
I'm glad you stood up to say that, too, because that's what I was going to say, it was critical, is an ongoing public education process where you're standing next to the container, you know, like in high-volume sites at appropriate times, and just really helping people be more conscious of what they're doing.
Yeah, well, just to the point, this whole change of consciousness is a huge, huge process, and so it takes studied work and process to change behavior, I mean, for a much bigger issue, you know, beyond cups and straws. So if we could kind of get into the depth of how we do this in our town and use that, any prototypes that have occurred, I think that's huge, we have to change behavior, so.
I do feel the tide is coming our way.
Yeah, I can see.
Any other public comments, not on the public hearing? All right, then I'll move back to the consent agenda, if anyone has any questions on that. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, if I can get a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we will go back to the continuation of public hearing, consider a local on any of the Irvington zoning code, create North Broadway mixed-use district. As we said last time, this is another one of those big projects where we basically have started the conversation, and now we want to hear what the public has to say. We're in no rush to change this. We feel we're being somewhat proactive, because we actually, now we have one contract been D, but for the most part, you know, we don't want to be reacting to the next continuum or the next, you know, large project that's going to come in and kind of have them dictate what we want to have zoned there. So we want to, per, you know, our comprehensive plan, there's a whole section on rezoning North Broadway, there were people that lived there, there were people that were business people there, there were people who just cared about the area, there's 14 people altogether on the committee, I was actually on that committee as well. We came up with uses, but we want to hear from everyone and hear about their potential uses as well. Part of it was, we said, you know, we kind of like what's there now, and what's there now is not what it's zoned for, so we thought that that was a no-brainer. We also thought that there were newer uses that might be better, to be added to it as well, and that's kind of how we started. And now, tonight, we really just want to listen and hear what the public has to say, or anyone else has to say. I guess that everyone would be the public, but, or my fellow colleagues does that. So with that, we'll turn the microphone over to you guys. And so process-wise, I think what we're going to do is, you know, maybe have one more public hearing where we hear...
public hearing where we hear from the public, then maybe have a work session where we kind of distill everything we heard into some action items, or changes, or anything else, maybe, you know, adding uses that people think would be good, and then, you know, tweak the law from there, or tweak zoning, I should say, from there.
Do we need to re-say what exactly the part is that is being considered for rezoning? I know we outlined that before, but it's just this, not this, it's not the west side, it's the east side, in here and here.
Yeah, I think most people, most people know the area we're talking about.
Okay, all right, good.
You know, we try to call it by the Irvington terms, like Maxon and Caraffielo property, and the building after the Caraffielo property, Abbott House, and then the, and Holy Spirit Association, or I guess we'd probably be called colloquially the community property.
Yeah.
So.
So there's six properties.
There's six properties, varying sizes, I think from just about an acre to 16 acres. So it's a wide range of sizes.
Consultants illustrations online.
Everything's posted.
Yeah, so there's, we actually, last, it was last meeting, I can't remember.
Yeah.
It was the last meeting, we had a presentation from our planner, who, when we kind of came with our comprehensive plan and said, can you make this into something? And we think she did a pretty good first crack at it. I thought it was going to take months and months and months, and she did it relatively quickly. I think we had three or four meetings with her, where we kind of helped her and said, you know what, I don't know what coverage really looks like, or I don't know what, you know, FAR.
FAR.
So she came up with a lot of diagrams and things too, so those are very helpful online as well. But, you know, really, again, we just want to kind of hear what people have to say after the first public meeting, especially things we've missed, those uses they think would be great there, usually they could be terrible, whatever it is, we want to hear.
Setbacks was a new problem.
And give us some feeling for what the density factor means, you know, how we can visualize what that, what that's about.
Yeah, if you want to just talk about it.
I'm not even sure, what do you mean the density factor? There are uses.
Section 6, Chapter 224, Article.
Well, all it's doing is telling you how to compute, compute how many residential units you could have, if you put a multifamily residence in there, you have to have single-family houses. But most of the uses there, that would.
No, not about uses, just like, can you like, right here it says 5,000 square feet density factor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What does that mean?
That's how, that's how you calculate, just so you know, that's not new to this. That's taken from the Resource Protection Laws, how you, how you calculate site capacity, is how you calculate how many residential units you can have on the site.
No, but convert that to a way that like regular DPOs can stand that.
Okay, so if you've got, let's say it's 20,000 square foot lot, and you don't have to subtract for steep slopes, you don't, so you've got 20,000 square feet you can work with, and the density factor is 5,000, it means you can have four units. I mean, you can have, actually, nothing near 20,000 square feet. Okay, let's take the smallest lot, which is about an acre, so there'd be about 80,000 square feet, and, and let's say, again, there were no deductions, and they wanted to put a multifamily building there, then you would calculate, you would take the amount of space, 80,000, divided by 5,000, the density factor, which is the density factor for multifamily, and it means you could have 16 units.
Okay, so you divide the total space by the density factor, and that's the number of units that could be.
Yeah.
Total usage.
There wouldn't.
Usable area of the plot.
Just so you know, that wouldn't be the only limitation, you might not be able to have 16 units.
Right, because you say 15, you limit it to 15, right?
No, 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 it isn't so much 15, it's, it, you also have to meet the setbacks. You have to meet setbacks, you can't exceed the coverage, you can't exceed the FAR, so maybe, or maybe, you know, that you couldn't have 16, depending on how big you.
I understand.
So it's just one of the, one of the factors that comes in.
Thanks.
Okay, fine, to go back, it's only relevant to the residential, you know, the density factor's irrelevant to the several other uses, like assisted living, like offices.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. I do think that the presentation that's online, maybe not about a particular one, but I think some of the, like, what does that mean, like, different types of, you know, FAR, or things like that, that show, be like, you know, one-story with two-story in the back, or three-story, again, I think that that's very helpful.
Yes, I just want to emphasize that it's, not all of us are easy doing the formulas, but she did a beautiful visual presentation, so.
So what do you find, because I went to the agenda, right, and then I, for tonight's meeting, and then I just, I was looking around, I found the law, but I didn't see any presentation attached to it.
I did this tonight, if you go onto the Irvington website and put in North Broadway and search, it'll pull up the, it'll pull up this whole North Broadway thing, and if you click on that, you'll get to the presentation, it's AKA, whatever.
AKA.
Yeah, we'll get the presentation, it's a PowerPoint presentation.
Maybe Larry, what we can do is put it on the front page.
So probably if you.
Here, we'll put it on the front page tomorrow.
If you put North Broadway Mixed Use District, then it'll show up.
But it will show you visually what that formula looks like, what could be built there.
Like when people describe things to me, I don't know.
That would be very helpful.
Oh, there are lines and setbacks, and then options, and little, little mini buildings of different sizes and shapes, yeah.
Yep.
Again, Chet Kerr, looking at the presentation, each of the different parcels potentially have different access points, but the one parcel that probably is most stressed in terms of its access point is the Abbott House parcel, which is only accessible through Strawberry Lane, then the extension of Strawberry Lane. And, and I think as we discussed last time, that is not a lane that would qualify as a village street in a certain configuration, and I know that it's walled, it would require substantial changes to provide access to it. So I just, my only question is, is in thinking about zoning that parcel, what account do you need to take into for the fact that it's currently, for all the kind of zoning and density, it's probably not easily accessible, as perhaps some of the other parcels are, and whether that should change your perspective on what could be done? You might, I assume, be able to, if you came in from Sunnyside through the Holy Spirit, and someone brought all those parcels, they might be able to breach all the way down to Abbott, subject to the inclines of the property, which would make it very challenging.
Tunnel.
Yeah, tunnel. But I just, I, what I heard last time, what I heard last time was a concern by a lot of the residents along Strawberry Lane and backing up against River View, that that especially would change dramatically, not just how you use those parcels, but how it affects the neighborhood around it. So my only, my only suggestion is, is thinking about that one parcel, which is not accessible as the other ones are, either Broadway or Sunnyside, whether you have to take a different approach as to what parameters you're going to allow or not allow.
I think there's that one overriding one that says it doesn't, what's that actually word, doesn't substantially add to the traffic, or something, there's like.
Yeah, that's a condition of the special apartment.
So it's like, to me, that's, it's, again, to me, I think, most of them would, like the Maxon property, which, which is an interesting one, I think, to me, what would be more compelling is if they said, we're going to be able to somehow contain that right onto Broadway, whether that's through an easement with the people from the north, or whatever. But you're right, that's the one, Abbott House, you couldn't do that, because Strawberry Lane, you could barely go in one way, you can't, you can't make that two-way. I think that that backstop of the, you can't increase traffic, would be very limiting on that piece of property. I think, I should also say that my house actually backs up on Abbott House as well from River View, so I have vested interest in this, but, you know, I think it's an interesting point, because there's not, you can take all you want, there's not, as you say, except if you maybe buy another big track or something there, there's not a lot you can do.
The reason why I raise it is because, you know, part of this, as I understand it, part of this is to kind of take control of what the zoning is, so that people who want to come in and use the property have an idea of what they can and cannot do.
Right.
But I think part of that, you zone parcel 6 to have the same kind of mixed uses, and we, some of the, some of the presentations that were on the PowerPoint show fairly substantial parking lots, depending how you do the density and what size building you do. The reality of it is, though, that, that parcel cannot be reached to even accommodate that amount of cars, even what Abbott House is doing right now. And I just, I just, it seems to me that the board should take that into account, as they think about whether that parcel should perhaps be treated differently, or whether or not, beyond just the general statement it can't have a negative effect on traffic, whether the board should recognize and acknowledge that Strawberry Lane at this point is what it is, and, and that any use of that property has to reflect the fact that that Strawberry Lane is as limited as it is. It's not, it's not qualified to be a village street, it doesn't meet those requirements, safety, access, parking, whatever. So just so that, if part of this is to set the expectations for developers, they understand that limitation. They may choose to buy the Holy Spirit and come in from Sunnyside, and that's another thing, but I think that setting the expectations for developers, given that restriction, would be a very helpful thing.
Can you think of a way to highlight this?
No, it's one matter of that, it's not, it's a big issue.
Yeah, it is a big issue.
It's an issue we recognize, and we know it's an issue we have to discuss.
It's also the biggest piece of property, so it's like a strange, you know.
I think Holy Spirit's slightly bigger, but it's a big parcel. If I could add one more pitch. The very eastern portion of that property, which is actually now wooded land, there's a slope that slips down to it, and that abuts the old, the actually village parkland that was dedicated as village parkland at the time the development up, I forget what, in development is.
Village owner.
Yeah, that, so behind that is actually a village park, it's inaccessible and totally used, but something that can, and this may not be for the board as part of a zoning, a zoning plan, but there is a large portion of that Abbott House property that is basically not used by Abbott House, is largely inaccessible from Abbott House, and whether or not that eastern portion also, which is actually not accessible from Strawberry Fields, should be dedicated differently, with a consideration of perhaps adding it to the existing parkland that was created when that development was done. So something to think about.
One thing that makes me wonder about, which we don't have to address now, but just as an FYI, if no change is made in the zoning of what Abbott House is right now, and it happened to be in other hands, and it happened to go by the current zoning, what would happen? So we don't need to deal with that now, I'm just kind of keeping that in the back of my head.
They were trying to sell it first.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Please.
Quick question, Danielle, we'll call it here. You mentioned institutional, what do you mean by, can you define institutional? It's not in the top four, you know, medical office?
Yeah.
There's another use there, institutional.
Well, no, it doesn't say institutional, the other use is places of worship, including parent houses, parish houses, religious school buildings, schools, public libraries, museums.
So that's the definition of institutional?
It also, well, I think, you're just using institutional to describe those things, it's not, it's not.
That was my question.
But often institutional does mean schools and stuff like that, which would be allowed there.
And those are.
Probably allowed, actually.
And those types of buildings do pay into the tax roll, are they added to tax rolls or not?
It depends on if they're a nonprofit or.
They're profit, they're not, they're not, you know, but you can't regulate that, because zoning.
Okay. A school that wished to be there, or religious building.
Yeah, right, now, that's, that's actually not a change.
Right, that's always the case.
Schools, it's always the case in residential areas, by special apartment, but all these uses.
And religious uses, they're pretty much, you can't say no.
Can't say no.
School uses.
Can't say no.
Can't say no.
You're welcome.
Can't say no. Can't say no.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Village Board, my name is Taylor Palmer with the Law Firm of Cuddy and Fader. We're here this evening in connection with the continued public hearing on the zoning change that's proposed. We are representing the estate of Stanley Rubensall, so that's the 76 North Broadway property, and that's north of Strawberry Lane, and then west of Abbott House.
Maxwell.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes, the Maxwell property. See, as you can tell, we've been recently retained in connection with this matter, so we're here tonight, and as the mayor said, we know we're early in the process and going through. Typically, we're on the other side, and we're saying, hey, go, 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 get these things done. But our client has asked us to appear this evening so that we can represent that we do want to look at the proposed changes to the zoning code, in particular, those, the bulk and area standards. One question, and again, we only submitted this today, and we really appreciate the Village Administrator getting it to the board so quickly and administering to the village attorney and clerk. We would ask the board, just to clarify, if this will be referred to the planning board for comment. We know that it has been referred already to county planning. There's a section of the code that's somewhat confusing even on my reading, as to whether that's a requirement of the code. I believe back in the 80s, it was modified so that.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement to refer to the planning board, but just a question that we had, and ultimately, we would ask this board to continue its public hearing, again, although typically, we're saying the other direction as a land developer or applicant. So we do appreciate that the board is looking at these comments and the comments of the public, but we will be providing supplemental submission to have more light that hopefully can create sort of the regulations that can really help make these properties develop in the way the village wants to see them done. So appreciate your time today.
Sure.
I would just comment, I'm glad that we have at least one representative of the owners of the, of the potential affected properties. I know that we've reached out to all of the owners, and we haven't really heard.
And the owners appreciate the opportunity just to be able to be here tonight and make these comments, and we will, we will ask the board and really the village to allow a security day with their attorney and their consultants, including AKRF, just to really speak to those issues. As you know, there was a potential contract vendee for this property, and again, we're just trying to make sure that there's an economically viable and functional way to make the development on these properties complete, and in particular, the Maxwell.
Maxwell.
Maxwell. See, Maxon House, see? It's new. Don't miss that one again.
Thank you very much. Maxwell. I'm getting my coffee.
Hello, Jerry's right between a lane and neighbor, so there's someone here. My property, the new zoning area, I have zoned effectively east, west, and north. We're a property which is stuck and surrounded by this area, so a couple of things, one, no one's reached out to us, so.
He's sent letters.
We haven't received a letter.
Only to the people that were actually being rezoned.
So not neighbors, and this is going to have a big impact on us, so, one, I'm a little disappointed that there hasn't been an outreach to us, given that we're going to be surrounded by potential changes, but no one spoke to us, and we almost, I felt like found out by luck through email, trying to, that this is.
Can I, can I ask if you signed up for our emails from the village?
No, clearly not.
Yeah. Something, actually, I mean, we've been talking about this for about 18 months, you know, so, I know we had, you know, from back, we were doing the comprehensive plan, we would have loved to have had you on that comprehensive.
Yeah, I, I.
But now, but what I think the good thing is, is that you're here now, and we're high hoping to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, and we're just trying to come to grips with that, because literally, you heard about it last week, and we're just trying to absorb what the potential changes are. So I just want to make a point that we are here. And secondly, while we should have been part of the email list, I also think there should have been an outreach to make sure we're aware of what's going on.
What would you recommend? I mean, because, because, I mean, we, there's articles in the newspaper, email blasts, we talk about it at all our meetings, I mean, I guess we, I mean, I guess we could send letters to everyone.
Yeah.
But you know what happens if I send letters to everyone on Strawberry Lane, then my neighbors on River View will say, I didn't get a letter. And we send it on, you know, it gets, it gets very hard, and it's just something we deal with, not just this issue, but it's, it's probably my biggest frustration that, you know, at least she didn't say we're trying to slip this by, because that's the two people's.
No.
You know, it's honestly our biggest issue, is getting, because people usually don't pay attention to what we're doing here in the village until it affects them, or, you know, I think the only reason I think most people heard about it was an email I saw that went around and said, our last meeting was your last chance to speak up, which I think was great, because it gave people a sense of urgency.
It wasn't true.
It wasn't true.
I think we should use the game.
But it was, you know, at least got people excited about it.
I think you need multiple touch points, because if we were all, if everyone was senior citizens living in the adjacent properties, maybe many of them aren't on email, and they still like email, you know, typically in business, we need various touch points.
I hear you.
Anyway, obviously, we need to review more, and we'll be, what we desperately do want to do is be part of this process, because we don't want this happening to us and to our property. We obviously have a lot of concerns, we're anxious about this, so we'll, we'll make sure that we're involved, and we'd like to have some engagement and involvement in this. in this.
What we can also do is if you guys want to get us a list of emails, I mean, we have, I have, my wife got a copy of the one, but if you guys want to give us the list, we're happy to make sure that you're personally notified.
Yep. Okay. And just a question.
This may be clear to you, Mr. Ray. The involvement is, all happens here, all happens in public meetings, so it's not like there'll be little meetings with people, so you should just, you know, like tonight, just come to the meetings.
I will. So my question is, and this is where it gets interesting, when things are very, very personal to me and my property, public forum, or should I be going seeing notes when this particularly related to my property to someone?
Really, it's kind of public forum. I mean, you could write a letter if you don't want to talk for ten minutes, and we would have you, you know, put a record, you know, put a ten-page, you know, letter from your attorney in the record, and then if you want to talk about it also, you could do that. But I think it's very detailed and involved, a letter might be a good way to do it, but then even if you come and summarize it, I think that's a good thing as well. I think it's effective both ways. Because sometimes if you get, you know, a huge letter, it's not as effective as your plea, you know, or if you explain why, or if we can figure out ways to mitigate things.
Okay.
So, and I think what, the reason, the other reason, one of the other reasons we're doing this is like in the last five years, we've had maybe five or six different people come in, so we want to kind of try to get ahead of that with you and try to, you know, so you don't have to worry about doing this for the next...
Yeah, we're heavily involved in when the right be...
The other one, yes.
Obviously, so, yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, again, I just want to, I'm pleased that the owner for the Maxwell property is here. I want to remind the board, which I'm sure you all know, that on that property is the Woodcliff Mansion that was owned by Georgie Morgan, who was the person who caused the name of Irvington to be called Irvington back in the 1850s. And, you know, again, it'll obviously be up to the owner of the property about what happens to that, but that is a one of the unique homes still left in the village, and I would encourage the owners to think about that as they think about what's going to happen to that property, and it's a very, you know, it has that brick building in front of it, but the mansion itself is a lovely, lovely thing, and it's a unique home left in the village, so.
Isabel, my owner. I'm at 3 Bracebridge Lane, but aside from that address, more specifically, I am the property directly across the street from the Calafielo property. I have a couple of concerns about the process in itself. Brian, I was happy to hear last meeting that you said this is going to be a long process. I'm a little confused, which you had just said earlier, as far as the board meeting and then going, what's the actual process going forward from today?
We'll probably, we'll have at least one more meeting, and probably, I guess, more than one more public hearing, especially if the neighbors are just hearing about it now. So, you know, my guess, if I, you know, gun to my head, when would we actually close the public hearing would be like September, because I don't want anyone to say that we passed this in August, and so to me, maybe the second meeting in September would be when we actually vote on something.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that we kind of calm this down specifically because of the fact you were in June. If you look at the attendance we had last week, it was huge, but now into June, and I think part of the reason why you don't see as many people here tonight is because this is a very, very busy time for individuals and families. Then we have, of course, we're coming to July, and we're coming to August, with so many people are away.
That's why I'm in no rush.
Okay, good, I'm good.
And if people, if people come in the first meeting in September and have fifty changes, we'll do it in October. You know, like, I'm not in a rush to do this.
I'm happy to do that.
It would be like the parking. If you remember the parking?
I do.
People complained about the parking because it took so long?
Yes.
But we did make everybody happy, but we got it as close to right as we possibly could, and this is, to me, almost a bigger change, because we can't change the parking signs. So I want to get this right, because we also don't want to be sitting through continuum for two years and having act of the raptors, because, you know, it's, you know, there's such strong opinion. I want to, I want to try to get ahead of this and try to figure out what you as a neighbor across the street want, and what the property owners want, and what the village thinks is best for the village.
Right, and I certainly appreciate that, but as we know, this is huge. This zoning is going to affect the entire character of this village, so I'm just suggesting that we just kind of calm this down again. I kind of look at this month, June, July, and August could kind of be a bust as far as getting community input.
But we're here, we're going to be here to listen, so.
Okay, great. The other concern that I have is, now, I happen to be a member of that committee, and it was a fabulous committee, and I applaud the village for putting that all together. I don't remember specifically some of the things that are listed here. Were the additions made, or is this exactly what we had recommended?
Could you, like, just walk us through?
Yeah, I don't remember anything that was added. I mean, it's possible it was, but I don't remember off the top of my head something that was added that wasn't in the conference.
Okay.
I think some of the things that are listed there were there before, and you probably didn't focus on them as a committee.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yes, totally, I understand.
Exactly, like the school usage, those types of things.
School, religious use.
Okay.
As far as the major added uses, like multifamily and assisted living, those are all, we have, we have those all on our comprehensive plan page, all the original recommendations, the original reports from the committees themselves.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Got it, okay. The other thing I would like to suggest, that being said, I have some concern with the religious use and the institution, specifically schools. We all know how...
You almost can't quite though.
Okay, can you explain that? Can you explain that? Because it's written, it's written right here, so I'm just wanting to clarify that we have no say in that.
It's already, first of all, it's already a permitted use, and they have to be permitted in residential districts.
They do.
You can't zone out schools or religious uses out of residential.
Even with traffic concerns, if you look at what happened in Greenberg, how many millions of dollars did they lose for the Fortress Bible case?
Okay.
Google Fortress Bible in Greenberg, you'll see that, it's almost, to me, it almost seems like the law goes too far one way.
Okay.
The whole religious freedom thing, that you can't, you basically can't, even if you say, you know, there are going to be a million cars coming through your street, literally a million.
And that's state, and that's state law?
It might even be the Federals.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, now, I brought that up out of concern, thinking that we need to build tax revenue, not, you know, deplete it, so that was the only reason why I brought that up.
We don't disagree with you.
Okay.
I think unfortunately, there's not much we can do.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess my final comment is I just hope that we can kind of slow this process a little bit through the summer.
Are they going to, are they going backwards?
Yeah, no, and truth be told, I understand your frustration not getting people in here, everybody at the last minute saying, oh, I didn't hear about it. I think it's up to us residents in the community that have a concern to bring people in, and I think that's what you saw last week, because, excuse me, last month, there were a lot of us that got on the road and told people this is an important issue for us.
Yeah, and I think the good thing was that the impression was it was going to be one night hearing, which was not bad. We might say we're going to vote on it next time, just to be clear.
Well, that's a good idea. But my point was in trying to get people to come, they're saying this is so busy, and I think that's why I just have concerns that...
And I think too, people should know that not everyone can come here at seven o'clock on a...
Correct.
You can write emails, letters, calls.
They're read into the record.
However, people want to get there, even if it's a one-liner that I, you know, I think you should have, you know, chicken coops should be allowed there. I don't care what it is, how absurd it is, one line to make it a little bit better is what we're looking for from each person, because we want people to feel like they're involved in this process.
Right.
Even if they don't get their chicken coop, we want them to feel like they've heard, and that process was, you know, was played out for the best of it. And I think, you know, I think that's all we can hope for, especially when something's this big and there's not a right answer.
Right, I agree.
We want to, we want to get it as close to right as we can.
I agree. Again, as, I don't mean to keep delivering the point, but I really feel June, July, and August are kind of...
We're just, we're here listening in June, July, August.
Okay.
Or read emails or whatever.
Okay.
There he is. Brian, I want to clarify one thing, okay?
Sure.
Now, Brian, you talked about having several public hearings, and that, I mean, maybe one or two more, and then, and then you tweak the law. People should understand that after the law's changed, and I, my guess is there's going to be some pretty substantial changes.
Yeah.
There'll be public hearings on those changes as well.
So in other words, a boutique hotel is defined as up to a hundred rooms? I would immediately make that no more than twenty-five or thirty, like just right off the bat. That's just one change right off the bat, you know, we haven't even talked about it as a group. It's not going to be a hundred anymore. I was thrown out after I Googled what is a boutique hotel, it's like the definition. So that's like an example. So we might, you know, in August or July, sit down at our meeting, redo it, and then we might have to renotice it, because it's going to be such a different law.
Right.
But it's going to be the same process. Nothing's going to be voted on until people are happy with their son.
Okay, good.
In other words, you could close this public hearing, and it wouldn't be undoing your...
We're not going to, we're not going to vote on it.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Sure. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. My name is...
Yes, you can take it out. Ashley.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Berlus, and I live on 120 North Broadway, and my wife and I just moved here brand new in the month of November of last year. Thank you, thank you. So we got one of the board members at where I live notice saying that there's going to be some changes done on North Broadway. So, you know, my wife and I, we moved here because of, of course, the peace and the tranquility that the village offers, and we've been wanting to move here.
Many board meetings.
Yeah, I went to the last one, that was really full. Well, the first, my first time was there in the one last month. But, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, past few years, we've been dying to move here, because, you know, we have some of our friends that live here, and we find it beautiful, and of course, you know, we all want it to stay that way. And, you know, I also became a volunteer firefighter here as well, so I was very excited about that. And one of my concerns on Broadway was, you know, kind of like, you know, we all know that it's a mean road, so it's, it can be a little chaotic, and in the mornings, of course, during school hours, the traffic gets, you know, kind of crazy. So that was like pretty much one of my concerns, like how chaotic it can be at times, and especially when responding to fire calls, like, of course, like at nighttime, it's not that bad, you know, there's barely no cars out on the road, but with the excess traffic that it would cause, it can, you know, be, it would just be difficult. I mean, of course, like, there's not a lot of huge emergencies here and everything, we don't have like huge fires, thank God.
Knock over.
Yeah, knock over. And we don't have so much chaos, but just, you know, I guess to keep in mind, like, whatever, I guess, does happen on Broadway. I mean, I love the idea that you mentioned last month as well, that we're not going to make it a hundred, you know, if it's a boutique hotel, it's not going to be a hundred rooms. That would, that would be, you know, that would be, you know, just too much. But, yeah, I just wanted to, just wanted to mention that, and, you know, we love, we love the peace here in the village, and we, you know, for years to come, like it to stay that way, and, you know, regardless of what happens on Broadway. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Some traffic issue.
Yep.
Mainly what you're talking about.
Yes, yes.
It's on our minds, yeah.
Who else likes to speak? You're saving it up for July when no one else is here. This is not your last time to speak about this. Hopefully, we don't get to the point where you guys complain that we've dragged this on too long, but, you know, we, I think, we want to make it abundantly clear, we want to continue to listen, we want to continue, you know, we'd love to hear some additional potential uses that people think would be good there. We'd love to hear the ones that you think are just absolutely absurd, and, you know, we're happy to tweak this and tweak it again. I agree, I agree. But otherwise, we'll continue to keep this hearing open, and we'll move on to the next.
I just wanted to thank the members of the Housing Committee who are here, you know, and encourage you guys to continue, you know, your interest in participating in this process.
So, in a related development, environmental review of the proposed local law amending the Irvington zoning board zoning code to curate the North Private Mixed Use District. Maybe you want to explain first why we're doing this, Mary Ann?
Yeah, well, on an application, well, virtually any zoning application, you have to do the review under the state of high amount of quality review, and to identify what could be potentially a large impacts, and if you see if you identify, probably you're not going to get them when you're just rezoning, because the rezoning isn't going to create the traffic or whatever, and more importantly, you've got a provision in, to get the special apartment, that you can't increase the traffic. But anyway, if you go through the environmental form to see whether you think there's going to be any significant impacts, you know, you can, if you find there's not an SC under limit, if you find there might be some, you might want to have some studies done on that.
That's the process.
So, I mean, I, did you want me to go through the form? I mean, the, the, the first, the first thirteen pages just identify what the project is, which is rezoning, that's it. So you skip, actually, you actually skip through most of it, because most of the questions related, because it's actually a developing. In fact, the form says, if it's just a, if it's just a legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, skip all this and go to HABD, which is significant. So it's on the second page, it's part two, here we go. I just want to do it tonight. It's probably not going to take very long. Okay. So the first question is, would there be any impact on land? Would the proposed action involve construction or physical operation of the land surface? No, that's...
This is, we've got to think of it as just the zoning change itself.
Not a project that actually happened.
That's approved by the zoning change, but the actual zoning change is not going to...
To remember that any, like any, if somebody comes in with a proposal for an assisted living facility, so it's rezoned, and then on that lot, there's an assisted living facility, you'll have to go through, would that assisted living facility involve any impact on land? Then the second one is impact on geological features, would proposed action result in a modification or destruction of or inhibit the access to any unique or unusual landforms on this site in that, you know. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Now, there actually aren't many wetlands in all that property anyway. Impact on groundwater, will the proposed action result in newer additional use of groundwater? It may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an amplifier, you know? I mean, I, I put in a no as just if anyone disagrees, just say, hey, I think there could be. An impact on flooding, the proposed land may result in development on this subject for flooding. At the beginning, that's in the flood plain. Proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source, none of those permitted uses would, so that would be no. Would it result in a loss of flora or fauna? No, and actually, it's even the way, the way it's drafted, the setbacks are very large, the coverage is small, there's probably less physical development than there could be under the current zoning, so. So that would be no. Impact on agricultural resources, not a big issue here. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the project and scenic resources. Yes, no, because actually, the point of the zoning was to try to zone it so it will look the same as it does now. That was one of the points. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, may it occur interadjacent to a historic or archaeological resource? Well, probably no, but, but on the historic thing, there, there are a couple of historic buildings there, there were on the character yellow site, there's one on the Maxon site, the mansion that Chuck Cobbs was referring to.
And, and Mary Ann, there's also across the street, the Madam C J Walker house, which is, is across the street considered adjacent?
Yeah, adjacent.
Yeah, but how, it wouldn't really affect that because what it's doing is creating much greater setbacks across the street than it probably committed.
Well, it...
So the zoning, I don't think would negatively...
No, the, the question is, the proposed action may occur interadjacent?
Yeah, but, yeah, I know, that's what the question...
So that you would say, yes, and then, no, no, no.
Would it have an impact?
Yeah.
No, and, and I'm sorry, what I'm starting to say is there actually is a encouragement of maintaining the historic buildings because there's a, there's a coverage bonus given if you keep up, if you keep the historic building up, you could maybe have a bigger building and more...
So why wouldn't we change that to yes, recognizing the fact that there is the mansion across the street and there are buildings that we're trying to maintain as possible on the properties? Because then you just go down, I mean, I know it's a, it's a no change issue because you go down A, B, C and just go, no.
Well, if you want to say yes there and then say no and all the ones that came in, that can, that can...
I agree. I think this is sort of flags that we're aware of, the historic buildings in the area.
Okay. It's, it's still would that end up being a no? Okay, but yes. So, so it's, it's a little queer because, which is the question? Is it occurring adjacent to something or is there any impact on archaeological resources? In some ways, the, the forms are not, um, are not, well, they're, they're much better than they used to be, so I'm not going to be... Impact on open space and recreation, will it result in a loss of recreation opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource? And that would be no. An impact on a critical environmental area and, and, and is it adjacent to a critical envi- area? And it is, it's a law and a high consumer or C D A, but, sort of like Marx's answer on the archaeological, but no, we think that's what occurs, so that's what we're asking then. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. No, well, it's not going to change existing transportation system. But that's a question, when you pick on transportation, it could certainly be more than that, it might be on traffic then. But because one of the conditions is you can't have the use unless you can show that it's not going to be subtracting significantly, then I think it's fairly uncertain out there.
Well, Mary Ann, I just wanted to point out too, during the break, we were talking about, you know, bus schedules and bus, uh, bus stop locations. So it does, potentially, I mean, nothing is fixed in, in, uh, you know, by the zoning, but it could certainly come up in the planning board review of a particular project.
Yeah.
Things have to be enhanced.
Yeah. If, if it were a use that was going to involve a lot of people coming to the zone, but then we do that later on. Will it cause an increase in the use of any form of energy? No. Will it result, will it increase noise, odors or alcohol lighting? That would have to be no because the requirements of the special permit are that it's not doing those things. Impact on human health, would it have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants? That's, that's, clearly no, I should say. Consistency with community plans, um, is it, is it, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? And yes, it's a direct output of the comprehensive plan. So the answer's no because it says, it's word, the proposed action is not consistent.
Right.
So it's not negative.
Definitely negative.
That was one of the things that mixed with the last round, it's not going to be very hard, but. Consistency with community character, the proposed project isn't consistent with the existing community character? The answer, no. I mean, it's a change, but the change is trying to, um, make the zoning match what's going on in, on those properties. So those are all the things. I mean, I, I think the answer, no, and everything, so, um, the board seems comfortable with that, so I think you can issue an negative declaration. Let's say there was some huge changes, not going to be, let's say you made a big change and said, um, we don't want one of the conditions of the special permit to be the look at traffic. Well, then you'd have to redo your seat, you'd have to do the function.
So by, by changing the, the top question to yes, like the historic and archaeological resources, but the underlying subparts are no.
Yeah.
That results in no for the next stage, okay?
Yeah. I mean, it's, you see, for most of the questions, it, it works, you answer no to the top one and the top question, it works. That one's just a little odd, the way it's worked, but everything under it is no. Then in the, the, the impact on the C D A, on the critical environmental area.
Okay, that's good.
Great.
Any other?
Next authorization to...
Oh, so we have to adopt it?
Yeah, a resolution?
Are we going to, we're actually going to adopt this type?
You may as well, you may as well, then you get that out of the way. And then, because we've got to circulate and maybe...
Okay. Whereas the Board of Trustees approved the local law amending the Irvington zoning code for a, the North Private Mixed Use District, but whereas the doubt showed said local laws like one action under State Department of Quality Review Act, whereas the Board of Trustees agree the environmental laws as a form of like said local laws determine such doubt show have no negative impact on the impact, now therefore be resolved, the negative information received or be issued. Make a motion, I can have a second?
Second.
All favor? I guess the only thing is that we need to just say if we change the law dramatically and say we want to put in, uh, industrial zones and...
River Town Square.
Yeah, River Town Square. Go back and look at it again, but, but I, I think you're right. I think most of our goals are try not to have any impact.
Right, and then any of the suggestions that have been made, considering the, the work perspective of how...
Authorization to approve change order number one for River Road Booster Pump Station. This is not a big change, huh? Oh, this is, oh, we're back to, okay, never mind. So we got, we got the answer, I think, we were looking for, right?
Well, my, my question is as following, I'll just restate, I'm, I'm concerned about if there really are images of significant weatherborne nature from wind and other kinds of destructive forces, then I'm concerned that cell towers in this area do not remain functioning. So require a manual visit to the facility to manage status or change operational settings. If this was larger than two streets in a neighborhood, I'd say that it was potentially a problem for the village in terms of risk, but it's, it's two streets in the neighborhood.
Well, Mark, they're also, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't, right now, without the cell stuff, wouldn't they have to go out there manually and do it anymore?
Well, I thought they had a dedicated line right now, didn't they?
I think this is more so they can monitor it.
It's, it's to monitor, that's all, but the, as the Water Department reported, the station runs by itself, basically. I mean, it's very little intervention. The monitoring is there, obviously, as a failsafe, but visiting it will be even more of a failsafe if there's a problem.
So I think, you know, it's almost like, you know, they can monitor it, you know, when there, when there isn't issues with the cell, which is an enhancement.
Yeah, I think it's true, and I'm not, that wasn't my concern, my concern is if there was a larger problem environmentally, a large scale problem, but because, like I said, because it's only two streets in the neighborhood and it's not half the village, then the risk maybe is not that great.
Okay. Results approved, following change to contract twenty eighteen oh nine with King's Capital Construction for the River Road Booster Pump Station project in the amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty one dollars and forty five cents. And authorized the village administrator execute said change document. Make a motion, if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Next is award of contract twenty nineteen oh eight for joint paving.
For paving with joint, sir?
Paving, oh, everybody's paving.
A little elbow greasy.
So this is a, a bid done jointly among the River Town villages, Ardsley, Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, Tarrytown, Elmsford and Irvington. The, we've done this now for, I've lost count, probably ten years.
Because I've been in office anyway.
Yeah, it's been...
Might have been my first year, so it might have been eight years ago.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, Irvington acted as we have for the last couple, few years, we've, we acted as the lead agent for doing the bidding. So we received the bids, reviewed the bids and made a recommendation for the low bidder. Everything checked out, as you see from the attached documentation. The bid prices are a little higher than we would have wanted, but not, uh, not completely out of bounds. But overall, uh, you know, the goal here is to reduce our cost, which I, I believe it does, as compared to doing the bidding on our own, or each village doing the bidding on their own.
Now, do the other villages have a say in whether or not the bids are too extravagant or do they just cede that to you as oversight?
They, they got all the documentation. Right, they, they have all the documentation that we have and there were no objections. I guess theoretically, one village could back out of the contract, that could, could happen, which is reduce this quantity a bit, but, uh, but I don't expect that to happen.
There we go, this is my summer reading project, when I get to read this, uh...
Yeah, sorry.
Whereas the village of Irvington is in a cooperative relationship with the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown, solicited bids for the milling and resurfacing various streets in the village of Irvington, and partner municipalities referenced above. And whereas a public notice for this project bid was duly advertised in official newspaper on May tenth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas at eleven AM on June fifth, two thousand nineteen, at Irvington Village Hall, all bids received were opened and summarized below. Montsanto Brothers, one million three hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents. E L Q Industries Inc., one million three hundred thirty seven, ninety seven thousand, three hundred seventy five dollars and twenty cents. P C I Industries Corp., one million four hundred thirty seven thousand, two hundred eighty one dollars and eighty cents. Morano Brothers Corp., one million five hundred sixty eight thousand, one hundred forty six dollars. The village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order and responsive specifications. And whereas, following the unit values bid in the contract, extended totals based upon the engineer's estimates of the work to be performed. In the village of Irvington, the value of the work is two hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred twenty one dollars and twenty five cents. With the balance of the contract, the value for work proportioned to the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings, and Tarrytown collectively summing to one million ninety, ninety eight thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and thirty cents. And whereas, in accordance with the contract, each partner municipality will separately authorize the contract and be responsible for payment of services performed within their respective municipality directly to the contractor. Now therefore be resolved, that the village board of trustees of the village of Irvington hereby awards the contract for the work to be performed for the twenty nineteen milling and resurfacing on various streets in the village of Irvington to Montesanto Brothers Inc., Montessano Brothers, in accordance to their unit prices contained in their bid of June fifth, two thousand nineteen, for the work to be performed within the village of Irvington and the other five villages, and to authorize the village administrator execute said contract. I'll make a motion, if I can have a second? All favor?
About time you dug in that one, we could have passed the streets.
I think I'm getting worse at reading it, Tim.
We've got another one coming up.
Award of contract twenty nineteen oh nine for joint curving. Or I guess it's joint curving. Yeah, joint curving, I don't know what that is.
That's a whole other conversation.
Is it your elbow joint or the knee or which is it?
So we, we do, historically, up to a couple of years ago, we were bidding the paving contract and curb restoration work, curb construction work as one contract. We've, we've broken it out into two separate contracts because you get two very different skills and types of contractors. So it turns out, if you're wondering, the village does not actually participate, Irvington doesn't actually participate in this contract. We have been installing preformed curves with our existing excavation contractor, so we don't use, it's actually more cost effective.
So that's usually you'd get the, usually you'd get the best rate and then they...
Right, exactly.
I wondered why the village portion wasn't mentioned.
Right, that's why.
And it's interesting that only one contract had bid on...
Both, yes.
Right, right.
E L Q.
Yeah, they're, and they're a, they're a larger operation.
They're over two. Anyway.
So, so, um, so we're not part of this, so is there a reason why we pass it anyway?
The, the two contracts have, have historically been bid out together, so we're, we're the lead agency right now to bid these, so we bid them. You know, it's all, it's all part of one effort.
So in order for the other communities to do this, we have to pass it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Whereas the village of Irvington in a cooperative relationship with the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown, soliciting this for concrete curving, the village of Irvington, partner municipalities referenced above. And whereas, public notice for this project bid was duly advertised in official newspaper on May tenth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas at eleven AM on June fifth, two thousand nineteen, you guys are allergic to my reading, at Irvington Village Hall, all bids received were opened and summarized below. Paladino Concrete Creations Corp., nine hundred seventy four thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars. E L Q Industries Inc., one million fifty eight thousand, five hundred eight dollars. M T S Infrastructure LLC, one million three hundred eighty three thousand, eight hundred dollars. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bids submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order and responsive to the specifications. And whereas, in accordance with the contract, each partner municipality will separately authorize the contract and be responsible for payment of services performed within their respective municipality directly to the contractor. Now therefore be resolved, that the village board of trustees of the village of Irvington hereby awards the contract for the two thousand nineteen Irving project, Paladino Concrete Creations Corporation, in the amount of nine hundred seventy four thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars, in accordance with their unit prices contained in their bid of June fifth, two thousand nineteen, for the work to be performed and to authorize the village administrator to execute said contract. I'll make a motion, if I can have a second? All in favor? I think I read that one better. One must got bidding. Capital budget. Last Wednesday, we reviewed the capital budget, um, which had a few long due projects, including the Matheson Park project, um, which we had a presentation on. There was a committee that had worked on the park, on, on the restoration, which would be some of the highlights, including a new playground and widening of the trails, or what do we call it, not trails, paths, pathways?
Paths.
So that's, I think that's, that's kind of one of the highlights. Did you get any software this year, right? That's always a highlight, too. So, I don't know what else, anyone else has anything they want to talk about?
So...
So do we want to have some discussion about the capital budget now?
Sure.
Is that the...
If anybody has a question, comment, I mean, that was your last time.
Can I just, can I just do a quick overview? And then you can go right into the specifics if you'd like. So what we've been doing for many years now is, is really trying to determine what the long-term needs of the village are, especially as it relates to capital, large capital projects, typically large. And we work with our departments, obviously, the Board of Trustees has a chance to sit and, and discuss it as well. And we assemble those needs and prioritize them and try to come up with a, a way to fund it, um, you know, again, on a priority basis, balancing lots of factors, including taxes, tax cap, uh, you know, and, and really just debt limits, a whole series of things that we have to consider. And this year is no different than any other year in that respect. We, we went through that process. We sat down at the last work session, as the mayor mentioned, to review all of the various needs and projects and, and try to lay them all out. This year, we have a, a number of projects that are identified all the way through two thousand twenty six. There are a total of, of almost thirty five million dollars worth of projects. But a, a little asterisk to go along with that is that there are about fifteen and a half million dollars worth of projects that are, that are labeled in our, in some of our graphs as tentative projects. They are very large scale projects that we have identified as a need. When they happen, how much they cost are all, you know, uh, best guesses at this point. And those, those projects include, for example, the, uh, the firehouse replacement or relocation or we don't know what form it's going to take, uh, but the need to replace the firehouse. The need to replace our D P W facility, um, again, whether it's a relocation and what form that may take, we, we don't know yet. Those projects alone are fifteen million dollars. And we have those reflected in here, although at the suggestion of the board, we broke those costs out in some of our graphing. And, and then also, there's a, there is a placeholder for the theater entrance project, which the board heard about earlier in June. And, uh, you know, there, there will be a fundraising component, as we all discussed, but there, there may be some involvement from the village, I would imagine, but we'll, you know, again, all of that has to be determined and discussed. So that, that's about, that's fifteen and a half million dollars. That still leaves almost twenty million dollars of projects which are not tentative, that are, that are true needs, identified needs, and, and those are the numbers that you're, that you're, that you have in front of you. They range from, as, as the mayor said, the renovations and improvements to Matheson Park. It includes necessary water projects, um, equipment replacement and, and so on. And so that's, that's the summary of, of what you're looking at there. I don't know if there's any...
There weren't any changes from last year, Ed?
There was, um...
Changed the graph.
Yes, you want to change the graph, but, but, um...
As far as, uh...
Yes, there, there may have been one, hold on.
Oh, we can be, we can talk about the clock tower plans?
Yes, yes.
That was our recommendation design for the clock tower project.
Right, so the, the, we identified a need for restoration work, repair work to be done on the clock tower itself of this building. And we accelerated the design work associated with that so that we can work on design, design right now and plan for bidding, uh, right shortly thereafter next year. So that was it, thank you.
I knew there was something.
Yeah, no, there was, exactly.
I remember.
Yep.
Saw that reading, my brain go. But yes, the biggest, the biggest taken item is the Matheson Park renovations, which, Joe, how many years have you been talking about doing that?
Two thousand four.
You were close now. You know, some other, you know, obviously the water sewer project, the River Road Booster Station upgrade, uh, the theater gets carpet written, carpet replacement replacements. The police don't have anything really cool. Clock tower restoration is an interesting one. The library, the chiller replacement and waterproofing of the foundation are both important projects. New fire chief car, new arc of rip, emergency escape system and the HVAC system. And some improvements to Main Street crosswalks, West Sunnyside Lane drainage project. And some improvements to Main Street crosswalks, West Sunnyside Lane drainage project, and the dump truck center. So we have five years on there, probably gets more than that.
Well, yeah, but...
That's what, that's what the state does.
Yes.
But, um, so those are the highlights to me. And, you know, again, we, uh, the, the, the department has taken these, picked this very seriously as, as those, you know, to the clerk's office and, uh, to the administrator's office to try to balance, you know, debt coming off and, and what we can put debt on. But there's never a great time to do a park renovation, in my opinion, because it's always something you say, oh, we've got one more year out of it, Jeff. So I'm happy that this is the year that we finally say, you know, uh, you know, I think the, the goal of getting more use out of Matheson Park, um, the goal of changing some of the rules, including allowing dogs eventually on leash, um, but these are all things, and allowing bikes and allowing scooters and skateboards, were all things that couldn't have been done if we don't do the renovation, so. We put a lot of work on all of those things, uh, so it's, you know, now we're putting our money where our mouth is.
So I had just one, um, one thought about a project that didn't come up. I totally agree with the projects that are, are down here, um, as necessary and, um, but I would want to draw attention back to the, uh, Main Street streetscape, that it's still accessible online. This, this is a consultancy group that we worked with for, for months back in 2014, and a lot of things that have happened on Main Street have actually come out of this plan, this master plan, the kinds of improvements that people have seen over the last few years. The part that we haven't done anything about yet, um, is what you might call the gateway to the, the village, which is right in front of the train station. And, uh, going back to the master plan, page 38 and 39, I was re-looking at that. And there was a lot of concern about pedestrian safety in that area. There aren't the crosswalks marked the way they now are nicely in front of the, um, the aqueduct crossing and elsewhere. There isn't signage, um, there, um, in ways that were recommended, um, and orientation signage for people who are coming here. So there was a lot of, um, kinds of improvements, uh, that were suggested, and, um, I'd just like to consider keeping, I mean, this, this long-range capital is, what, eight years, 10 years? I don't want that part of this master plan to fall off the radar because I think that's as equally important for pedestrian safety. There are people running to the train, running from the train, and it doesn't look as appealing as it could for the village that we are, and the signage is kind of nonexistent. So, um, I don't know how that's handled. Larry and I talked a little bit about that, that we can adjust our capital plan going forward. It's not like this is it for those 10 years. So I don't know if anybody else has any other comments about that part of the master plan or how it might be.
Well, yeah, I, I like it what you're talking about, Kai. My concern, two concerns, one of which is, since we're up in the air about what's going on at the DPW corner that can affect traffic patterns and everything else, but, you know, so we've always talked about the idea that it would have to be south Astor around to the station and also south Buckout, that whole quadrant looked, or, and north Buckout, that whole quadrant looked at in terms of traffic patterns and not just the...
Oh, yeah.
Not just the, uh, station drop-off area, so that's...
Actually, when I started thinking about the two pieces, that's what reminded me about this. The, um, the traffic, um, that comes on, on north Buckout and then tries to go, then goes to the, um, the waterfront, it's been a lot of discussion over the last, at least year to make that only a left turn so that in order to go to Bridge Street, you don't go on north Buckout, that's so congested. And, and then the second part that I know is in people's consciousness is the idea of making, um, the block of south Buckout right before Main Street, um, it would, that it wouldn't be possible to come from the south. You would come to the DPW, that corner, and you'd have to go down by the line. So those things are part of the plan.
Well, make it one way. But the, the second point I was going to make is just because there's a lot of issues still up in the air, I, and because the Main Street plan was still very conceptual, I think that what would make sense would be to fund a, actually a more concrete design, um, effort for that area and, because we don't, you know, I don't think we know yet what all the issues are and what the potential costs or trade-offs and mitigations might be. So it seems like we need at least one, in my mind, we need at least one level deeper detail before we can even consider what that project might be.
Yeah, I, I think there are, yeah, I kind of argued with myself, you make this bigger or smaller, and I, I thought about that, all those parts that you're thinking about, too. The parts about that that might be a smaller project, um, would be the crosswalks and maybe the signage there, that it seems like no matter what, you need to do something about that. So I'm just throwing it out there to keep it on the radar and, and wonder how we might, um, think about that as a, as something that is often fundable if you have a plan. When, when one of those bridge authority comes or the CFA, um, the big state one that's due at the end of July, if you've got something ready, you've got about two months to apply, so you need to be prepared before and say, this is what crosswalks would cause, this is what signage would cause, this is... So I'd, I'd like to, to keep some of that, um, in our, in our awareness so that we're...
I almost have a question for a planner, too, would be, could you, so we, how do we talk about the, the, uh, the north Buckout piece? You know, what's the safest thing? Is it, you know, one way, is it one way or the other way? There's a, you know, one way or the other way? Is it left turn only? Like what's, I wonder if you could almost pair those two pieces and not necessarily do the part near Astor Buck yet? Or it doesn't, doesn't make sense to, especially because we're selling DPW and Astor Buck is going to be dealing things. You know, is that isolated enough that it's not all kind of one big one yet?
I, I'm, I don't know anything about what the DPW replacement would be, so that's, to me, is still a conceptual block.
Yeah.
But we know that we probably want that to be business and multifamily. I mean, I imagine that's, so any planner would be able to block that out in some way as term, in terms of potential reasonable expectations, you know, what kind of population density we have there. But I don't know that we would be changing anything dealing with Astor Buck because we already got, discussed the, um, plans for the sidewalk on the south side of Astor and so forth, so, you know...
I mean, we'd also talk about some, um, potential, uh, like roadway improvements.
Roadway improvements at that intersection.
Yeah.
But you still need to look at, you would still, no one's looked at really traffic flow to see what, what makes the most sense in terms of traffic flow and safety.
I think that piece of it alone might be, you know, we did talk, we did tell people...
So Brian, which, which, which piece are you talking about now? I'm sorry.
I mean, the flow, the, the, the flow of all the traffic down there. Because, you know, because I think the, you know, we, we heard from, you know, almost every resident, um, north Buckout that they needed something to change.
Which way?
Business. Uh, it's such a busy street because of the post office and, and people going to Bridge Street and late for their trains or whatever. So, you know, that might be something, maybe, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the best way to do that is, like, do you have someone from AKRF come in and talk about what a plan might look like at a, at work session? It might, you know, could you phase it? Could you do it all, it makes sense to do it all at once? Like, maybe that, and then I think you're right, the crosswalks, we could probably come up with an estimate, the signage would come up with an estimate, but maybe, maybe the first step is we see if we can have, potentially have a planner come talk about how to plan it, uh, the best way, the most effective way, because I think they could also tell you if, hey, you're looking to make major changes to DPW, we could factor that in if you're making changes to Astor Buck building, we could still consider that as, you know, consider that.
Let me, let me just make a suggestion, just because, um, we're not going to figure it out tonight, certainly.
Right.
Neither am I. I, I, give me a cha, give me a chance to kind of assemble a way forward, and, uh, you all still need to make sure that you want this as a priority, too. I mean, you know, I'm not saying that you haven't checked off that box necessarily, but it's kind of the first time we've talked about it since probably 2014. I know we've talked about components of it, but as a larger thing, so, um, but let me give it some thought, and I can come back even at the July work session, just to lay out what I'm thinking, and...
Sounds good.
If there's a need to hire someone right away, that's great. If there isn't a need to hire someone, but there's a, you know, an amendment to the capital budget that you can do to, to put it, to put a placeholder in there for a future year.
Why would we go down bonding, you know?
Well, we're, we're issuing, we're actually issuing long-term bonds this year...
Yeah.
In November, but the process starts probably two months before that.
So we have a little bit of time.
Well, yeah, but, but it wasn't about planning money. If you're only talking about planning money, it's not the end of the world that it makes it into a bond issue.
Right, right.
We're talking about it, you could be talking about a $50,000 consultant, which is not something I'm too worried about as far as bonding, so...
Unless we can scope the design effort if we want to break it into pieces, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to give some more on.
Okay, so we'll, we'll maybe by the next, uh, work session.
So I'll, I'll mark it down for the July work session to bring something back and then we can discuss it further.
That would be helpful. Because I completely agree that this is not something we should let just disappear. On the other hand, it's so connected with a much bigger question, it's hard to know how to chunk it out.
Right.
So I guess what I'm thinking, the, the big project of what will happen to DPW is certainly more than, for something to actually happen, and that's, I say that's, is that five years or, and I'm thinking of the way the traffic is now and the safety issues now, so piecing it might be solving some immediate things rather than waiting for the whole thing to get done as a thought.
Right.
Okay. Good.
Okay, thank you.
Resolved at the 2019 capital budget dated June 17, 2019 is hereby adopted. I'll make a motion if I can get a second. All in favor? Park going to be ready by fall, or? I figure you're going to work it right now.
He's getting a double pie.
He's, he's starting devilish.
Uh, Cable TV Fund elimination. Sounds so derogatory.
That's scary.
Yeah. Does you want to give the...
This is a good thing.
Yeah, it could be.
Do you want to give us the quick background again, Larry?
Yeah, so, I'm not going to go through the ins and outs of fund accounting, but we do have a fund on our books called the Cable TV Fund. Historically, it was there to account for, uh, monies that we received from cable TV companies, as it is, uh, right now, multiple. And the money was dedicated for, uh, capital purposes and not, um, uh, operating expenses. So this was an accounting way that this was handled, but, uh, it really is not serving much of a, a useful purpose the way the accounting is set up at this point. And, and, and that doesn't even take into account what the future of our cable TV franchises will be, which, uh, no one knows that quite yet either.
Sorry.
So, uh, so the, the sum total of this is that this, this is the, uh, the elimination of the Cable TV Fund. There's, uh, there, there's some, uh, estimates of what the numbers are, but we're not talking about large numbers. It actually has the, the net effect of increasing unassigned fund balance in the general fund, um, by, uh, approximately $22,389. The numbers could change a little bit, um, with the final year audit being undertaken in the next month or so. But this, this resolution gives, um, the clerk treasurer to make the, uh, the authority to make those necessary transfers.
And I'd be so much more likely to like that authority. Do you think this is a good idea, Larry?
Oh, it is, absolutely.
Okay.
We have a deficit in that fund, we need to eliminate that, so we have to reserve in our general fund to, um, to compensate for the deficit in the cable fund. So this will definitely, um, it will help our financials and the presentation will go for, for bonding.
And the auditors agree as well?
The auditors. Yeah, it was one of their suggestions.
Okay.
Whereas the board of trustees wishes to eliminate the use of cable TV funds and have all residual balances absorbed in the general fund. Whereas the net effect of the general fund of this transaction for the fiscal year ended May 31st, 2019 is estimated to increase general fund unassigned fund balance to $22,389, now therefore be resolved. It's authorized to clerk treasurer to make all necessary general entries in order to close out the activity of the cable TV fund and transfer residual fund deficit to general fund effective May 31st, 2019. Further resolved, authorized clerk treasurer to make the following adjustments to 2019-20 budget as detailed below. I'll make a motion if I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I just have to say, it's a sad passing. When I first got out of college, I worked at Public Access TV place as a video editor, so, and production.
This probably has a better camera.
Well, that's the thing, right? But that was so many years ago. I won't say because it's probably, uh, but it's sad to see we've come to that point.
That's amazing.
Except, as you say, the camera is better tool and the software on the PCs now are better tools than any we ever had.
Video cast or whatever they're called. Next up is approval plan, uh, water fund transfer. That's kind of the end of an area, Larry.
Yeah, right, though, this one is. Actually, this is a little bit more significant than, than the last one. So as, as you know, there's been, uh, for all of your years on the board and, and going back before that, there's been a, uh, deficit in the water fund, um, which had developed in the early 2000s. The deficit had ranged as high as about 1.8 or 1.9 million, which is a very big number. Through the board's efforts in the last, really, 10 years, uh, that deficit has been, uh, reduced significantly. Uh, there still is a deficit, not a, not a very large one, relatively speaking, and, uh, there's more than enough, uh, fund balances in the, uh, general fund to cover any deficits in the water fund. As we discussed at the work session, um, you know, from a philosophical standpoint, if the deficit is too large, uh, then really, and, and you were to simply absorb a very large deficit into the general fund, then essentially you're using tax revenue to absorb user charges that were undercharged. Now, in large part, they're, they're similar customers, but not all the same. Right. This deficit now is, is exceptionally small, relatively speaking, um, and so we're recommending a transfer of $412,000 from the general fund, uh, over to the water fund to eliminate the deficit and to establish a small surplus, fund balance in the, in the water fund going forward, uh, of about 5%, which is, again, relatively small. And that's it.
Sounds like one's for going. This you should pass out bottles of water.
Well...
Green Chelsea would like to.
Yeah.
And Larry, just remind me, this, this deduction from the general fund leaves the general fund percentage still at a very, very...
Over 20%.
Yes, yeah, as we discussed, the, the, um, the percentage, the way we measure the size of the fund balance is the percentage of revenues in the general fund, and the percentage of revenues, typically we would have a target of 10 to 15%. We've actually floated above in the 15 to 20% range, but in recent years, we're, we're up as high as about 28%, which is most definitely too high. So we're, uh, we've used it in a lot of different ways, including, um, avoiding borrowing on some capital projects, as you know, um, but this is another way that will now bring that fund balance down, uh, and still be around 23%. So it's still, still healthy.
So a lot of these monies were also reflected and restricted from fund balance?
Yeah, a lot of these were reserved anyway, but, um, so this just closes everything out.
Resolved, authorized clerk treasurer to make the following adjustments to 2018-19. Is that right? 2018-19?
18-19, yes.
Yes.
Budget, general fund increased appropriate surplus $412,000, increase transfer to water fund $412,000, and water fund increase transfer from general fund $412,000, increase contingency $412,000. Further resolved, authorized clerk treasurer transfer $412,000 from the general fund to water fund effective May 31st, 2019. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, the goal there, I'm sorry. The goal, the goal was to have that reflected in the most current year's fiscal year statement, uh, which just ended May 31st.
So it would just come, that, that transfer will have been done?
Uh, approval interminable agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding the East Irvington Fire Protection District for 2018 and 2019. It just gets us up to date, Larry?
Yes, this will bring us up to date. Um, as, as you probably know, the Irvington Fire Company, um, uses its volunteer resources to cover the East Irvington Fire Protection District, which is part of the unincorporated town of Greenberg. Um, we have an interminable agreement that needs to be approved every year. Uh, we're, we're in arrears on 2018. Uh, 2019 is also being considered at the same time. Um, Greenberg has already held their public hearing on these contracts, um, and I actually don't know whether they've adopted them or approved them or not, but in either case, we need to do it on our side so we're ready. Um, it provides for a, a payment from the town of Greenberg of, uh, $108,867 and $110,123 respectively, 2018 and 19. And then pursuant to New York State law, we turn around and pay 35% of that amount to the Irvington Fire Company for their coverage of that area. to the Irvington Fire Company for their coverage of that area. So, it's a, we net out a certain amount, and that's been the arrangement for many years. And these numbers are very similar, you know, they're based upon our existing operating budget.
And there's like a formula, too, about how many houses and its coverage and open land and built-out land and everything else.
It's quite interesting, actually.
Straight and piece of law.
Do they actually look back on the number of calls from that area over, no?
I guess it's more what you're covering.
Yeah, what you're covering, not what actually happened.
Yeah, which is why the formula takes into account the amount of open space so that, you know, it's not just based on number of houses because you can have a brush fire and any number of things. So, it's, again, it's, the formula's been developed over many years.
Whereas the village of Irvington and town of Greenberg have reached agreement on the provision of fire protection services for the East Irvington Fire Protection District for the periods January first, 2018 through September thirty-first, 2018, and January first, 2019 through September thirty-first, 2019. And whereas the payment due from the town of Greenberg under study agreement is one hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars for 2018 and one hundred and ten thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars for 2019. Subsequent payment due from the village of Irvington, the Irvington Fire Company is thirty-eight thousand one hundred and four dollars for 2018, thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars for 2019. Now therefore be resolved, authorized mayor execute interminiscible agreement with the town of Greenberg regarding the East Irvington Fire Protection District, subject to final review by the village attorney. And further resolved, authorized clerk treasurer upon receipt of the payment from the town of Greenberg to make a payment of thirty-eight thousand one hundred and four dollars for 2018 and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars for 2019. Irvington Fire Company, in accordance with the terms and conditions of the interminiscible agreement, I'll make the motion if I have a second. All in favor?
I was saying that I did review it already there.
Okay.
I reviewed it in section nine.
Did you, we have to wait until they vote for it, sign it?
Yes, yeah, I don't want to have any, they'll send over signature copies. Yeah, thank you. I just didn't want to wait till July if we didn't have to.
Sure. Reports of board, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports. Mr. Gill, then.
Nothing to add tonight.
Doc?
First of all, a reminder that the farmer's market is now looking running every Sunday nine to one, I believe. In addition, Teenscape and Summer Camp, 2019, were both started on July first. The annual Independence Day fireworks is scheduled for Thursday night, July fourth, in Matheson Park. And Brian, I'm afraid that if it rains, the firework date is...
Move to Rocktoberfest, which is the last Saturday in September, whatever that date is.
Fireworks are cosponsored by the face committee. Irvington Woods Committee announces summer days at the Albatramancha Center. That was part of what Chet was talking about, but it starts June twenty-seventh through June thirty, with free events open to the public.
Is that it?
That's going to have to be it.
It's plenty.
Is this the last for the rest of the...
Oh, nice.
Oh.
Wait, watch. Tommy?
Well, there is, in my, in my role with the tourism and downtown improvement and various hats that I wear, there's, I've mentioned this project before. It's, it's a mobile phone app that the Bridge Authority paid for, for communities near the bridge to give information to travelers about the local communities that they will find when they travel through here. So, I had recruited some volunteers to help with submitting what would be said and how our story of Irvington would be told. So, they're having another meeting about this, so, because Irvington now, because we're very close to the bridge, will get additional spots, both for some commercial establishments, if they're in interesting historic places, as well as spots that people might want to visit. So, tomorrow, I've now recruited Michelle from Bazaar, who will attend, as well as Barry Seaman, who will attend, and we will all see, you know, what else they need from us. We have a script that was written when we had the trolley for a few years, the historic trolley, and the historical society wrote a script about things that you might see going through Irvington. So, I'll be able to tell you more about that after that meeting tomorrow. That's basically it. The theater, you've heard about the theater and seen some communications with them, so I think we're good.
Great.
Irvington Village Court, sixty-five charge from five-one to six-fourteen, sixty-five charges received, one hundred and seventeen charges disposed, for a total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller of twenty-one thousand three ninety-five fifty. For the library, it's a busy week, most weeks at the library are busy. The library is open for extended hours during high school exam week, which is this week, Monday through Thursday. Plenty of space for group study sessions and snacks and reference support are available. Computers are also available, and we are open to the public in general. Reference computers, circulation, all open and staffed. It's not clear whether others can get snacks, but... And as has been mentioned, Friends of the Irvington Library will present the special lecture at the library slavery in Irvington, and I will follow up to see if there's a way to get that recorded. Summer reading programs kick off this week, Thursday for kids with Joe the Magic Man at three forty-five, and Friday for adults. First program for teens will be the Henna Tattoo Program on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, but teens may sign up for the reading program before that. I think that's encouraged. Anyone who would like to, check the website, irvingtonlibrary.org, or stop by the library. And the fire department, they're meeting, their monthly meeting is June twenty-seventh. Eleven calls this month so far and one forty-two calls to date. Marine Force Service is stationed in Tarrytown. Response procedures will be as follows. Life-threatening, respond in emergency mode. Non-life-threatening, respond with the flow of traffic. Boat training will take place in the summer months, good plan. Captain Gallagher putting together boat and rope handling procedures for those that respond. There was a fire in Hastings, a thank you from the entire fire department for all who responded, and a reminder to clear your, clean your gear if you participate in interior operations. Critical response update, Chief Dabnet with Sergeant Seaman of the IPD to review the outline for critical response on active shooter situation. Next step, schedule the time to go over that, conduct a walkthrough for all members. The Irvington Girls Basketball Championship, championship barbecue was a great success, thanks to all, thanks to all who participated in the Memorial Day Parade. This month, training in June has already taken place for burn trail, boat trailer, burn building, and interior tech. And in July, trying to get a walkthrough of the Columbia Nevis properties and the pump ops large diameter hose. June monthly meeting, July twenty-fifth. Projects, best practices and policies, draft sent to members to review. Second floor restoration is ongoing. Ladder thirty-six likely going up to New England for repairs within the next two weeks. Downing with hydrant adapters, aim to put them in on July twenty-third. Court security boat grant, paperwork submitted the end of May pending Coast Guard review. Hose and pump testing scheduled for August, and there will be a fireworks detail on July the fourth. Everybody who's response, who's part of that will be responding at the headquarters in six p.m.
All right.
Excellent. Village insurance report.
Nothing tonight.
Village court treasurer's report.
I just want to remind everyone that first half, village taxes are due by July third. It's a grace day because of the holiday weekend. And also that the online portal is working very well, where we encourage residents to please use it. It's gotten a very good response from residents so far. We have a lot of people paying online for now water and for the taxes. I hope everyone finds that to be a convenience. Lastly, we started our audit, we will be starting the audit this week. The field work is starting on Wednesday and Thursday, and then the actual audit right after June.
Excellent. Village attorney's report. Hold the comment.
Just one. About twenty-eight months ago, this board adopted a resolution urging New York State to pass, really rescind a prohibition that was implemented in 2001 that would require, that required people to show proof of immigration status to get driver's license. And tonight, the Senate passed the bill, yeah. So, it just left Cuomo to sign.
As he expected.
Well, he's, he's, you know, hedging a little bit, but the Attorney General came out today to assuage some of his questions. You know, I teach English as a second language at Neighbor's Link, and my student this morning asked if she could keep her phone on right next to her during the lesson in case her husband got, had to, has to drive illegally for his work to feed the family, if she could keep her phone on in case he called. You know, wonderful family that's just on edge 24 hours a day. So, again, thanks to the Village of Irvington for being on the, on the right side of this and after...
We got to the end zone anyway, we'll see what happens.
What's that?
Got to the end zone, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, yeah, Cuomo is inscrutable, yeah. Thank you.
You've done a lot of good work on that, Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, from comment, review of action items.
So, there's three, three items came up. The first is to get a report back on recycling from parks in DPW, but actually, it's to get a date when we'll have a report back, so that's the first step. I'll be adjusting the website to make sure there's a prominent link to the AKRF zoning presentation. And the last is to bring up the gateway area project at the July work session.
With options.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to adjourn if I get a second. All in favor?